Not only do we talk about low enrolled, but I've also embedded as a reminder into the presentation what our process is, what are some prouds that we didn't necessarily expect going into the process? And then, you know, we wrap up the presentation talking about low enrolled. But, you know, Dr. Sanchez mentioned it's not just I, you know, kind of who just does this on our own, right? It takes really a team of individuals, both here at the high school and at the middle school in order to, you know, prepare for the courses for this upcoming year. And this really serves, right? This process serves as the foundation for the master schedule that is eventually built, right, over the summertime based on the courses that students request. So we build our schedule not based on what we think is right, is what students are requesting, right? And this leads us, you know, every week after scheduling is over, I look through a report of just how many courses students have requested, you know, which courses are the most, you know, popular ones, how many sections do we need of them, et cetera, before actually starting to build the overall master schedule. Overview, so we're going to talk about the scheduling process tonight, the prouds, as I said, you know, in this scheduling process this year, the low enrolled courses that, you know, I need approval from you, the board, to say it's okay to move forward with the classes, and then any questions or comments? So the scheduling process, how do we get, as a reminder, you know, from year to year, how do we get to where we are now? So we begin the course fair this year, was back to in-person. If you remember, the last two years was a little wonky because of COVID, so we returned to in-person. Did it a little differently still because February, we were just coming out of the winter surge of COVID, so we decided to do the course fair during PE classes. PE meets every other day, so every student takes PE, so over the course of the 9th and the 10th of February, teachers, students were able to present the various courses we have here at OHS, which is one of the, you know, best ways to get students interested, especially underclassmen in courses. Then the course guide gets released to the public on the February 17th, so right before spring break. I always encourage families over the break to look at that course guide. We are, you know, one little tidbit of information, we're looking to change the course guide up a little bit going forward in the future to make it a little more user-friendly, a little more accessible, and summarize some points because it could be lengthy and cumbersome for our families and students. So that's something that, you know, hopefully next year is going to go undergo a redesign. And then scheduling begins right after winter break, so March 1st, April 29th this year was our scheduling window. That's not to say that changes aren't still being made now because changes are still being made every week, right? The difference is between March and April, students meet with their counselor, they, the students themselves can go into Infinity Campus and make the change, whereas now, after April 29th, they have to come to their counselor to make the change, right, as we start to build the courses. So they, each counselor meets individually every student, they have individual student meetings, parents are welcome to join that. So all students met with their counselors to review their transcript, and there's a conversation around what is required, so what are the things you absolutely have to take, and what are the things that you would like to take for this upcoming year? And then that's how course requests are done. Incoming ninth grade, right, it's a little different because up to eighth grade, everything is prescribed year to year, there's very little choice. However, coming into the high school, you know, over the last few years in particular, we've built some more electives for freshmen to be able to take and select from. So we had our incoming grade nine parent night, March 21st, 24th, that's the first time that we introduce, excuse me, this part of the scheduling process for incoming families and students. Then Dr. Lopez, the week of April 4th, so right before spring break, visited all eighth grade classes. Right before that, Antonio Goninho, one of the school counselors at the middle school, want to give a shout out to him, not only is he preparing the outgoing eighth grade, but the incoming sixth grade, he met with eighth grade classes, social studies classes, to kind of prepare them for Dr. Lopez's visit, which is a little different than we've done in prior years. So they kind of, students already had, eighth graders had an idea of what to expect when Dr. Lopez went over. Also this year, we had Ms. Galindo and our counseling interns go to the middle school to help with scheduling, which was awesome because now you had about five individuals helping classes of students schedule incoming ninth graders, schedule classes. The intern program has been fantastic here at the high school this year, it's the first year, right? Mr. Gray is actually one of, was one of our interns this year, because not only does he serve as our attendance officer, but he's also completed his degree for school counseling, and he was one of our interns this year as well. So again, it was nice to have that additional support that we've never had before to kind of support our incoming ninth graders. And also, again, slight changes between AMD and here are still being made before really the final numbers come in, usually mid-June. So communication about scheduling, we send out general OBLAST to families and students when the process began in March. Counselors posted their meeting times for each individual student on their door, and every counselor has a Google Classroom and a Remind, so those are the avenues in which we communicate with students. Then we did a school-wide assembly at the beginning of quarter three to kind of just review some expectations going into the second half of the year, and included in there specific information about scheduling, which this year the counselors said, Stephen, we got to like do this going forward because so many more students like kept their appointment times this year, as in other years we're trying to like, you know, get them in the door. That worked, is having everybody hear the same message, you know, consistent message. That's something we'll keep going forward. The course guide was sent out via OBLAST on the day of the release, and it's on our website, and then we have grades nine, 10, 11 each have a night between January and February, and we also talk about the course guide there and the scheduling process. So that's our communication. So prouds for this year's request, got a few of them. So one of the things to remind everybody is I was very proud in December to stand up before you and present courses, but I really didn't present them, it was students that presented them. With our Student-Driven Curriculum Club, Ms. Libertino, they took charge in recommending the courses that we had this year. And when you evolve student voice, we know that there's going to be awesome outcomes. Being there with Fashion 1, 2, and Social Action, typically new courses start below 20, and here we are with these numbers already this year for a course that we had not. So again, that speaks to kind of the perspective of student voice, right, and what they're asking for. Clearly, there is, and these numbers continue to go up, like every week, like these are as of this afternoon, because when I do this presentation, I try to give you the most up-to-date numbers. So as of this afternoon, these were the numbers for these courses growing each week. So it just again goes to show that including their voice, having them at the table, working with teachers, working with us to identify, so what are students interested in, we start to see, you know, our numbers go up, so they're not low enrolled. Usually I'm saying, hey, these are new, remember, they're usually start off low enrolled, and I'm saying, you know, the opposite, the last couple of years, because we've shifted how we're offering courses. And then reading between the lyrics, a couple of years ago, this was also a student-driven course. It started during COVID, which was a tough start, then this year it didn't run, and then it popped back up again for next year now with 56 kids interested. And again, it just took a year hiatus, it was hard to get off the ground year one, but then students, you know, between Ms. Mingo, Ms. Libertino, it really started to catch on, so we're opening it back up with a very strong number that we're proud of. And then our kind of redesign of Capstone for the senior experience, working with two of our English teachers, Ms. Dr. Fink and Ms. Helly, we're looking at redesigning what the Capstone experience looks like for our 12th graders and the culminating experience that will include also internship experience, and we've already had 30 seniors signed up for that. And that's hopefully going to be, you know, later on in the future, I propose as kind of our new journey towards Capstone. So again, just some prouds, because I always feel like low enrolled seems so negative, but I'd like to kind of highlight what are some of the positives that come out of the process, too. Low enrolled courses, as Dr. Sanchez said, are below the board policy of 20 students. So planned low enrolled, so this is just a reminder that these courses are intentionally low enrolled, right, just based on state requirements and guidelines, our ENL support classes, our special education classes based on our students' IEPs, 504s, so this is resource room skills, departmental classes, CALP, and life skills programs, and then our reading and AIS. So these will, you'll typically see under 20, just because those are the guidelines. Low enrolled, I always have these slides, low enrolled, but expected to increase. So as I shared with you before, you know, one of the things that I do right after scheduling closes in April is I typically, and this year having the coordinator model, is I had the coordinators and the administrators work with some of the teachers that typically teach some of these courses that might be low enrolled, but have had higher enrollment in the past, try to get more students, you know, interested and find out like what's going on, why haven't we gotten those numbers? So even though these numbers are below 20, I anticipate that before we actually build the schedule at the end of June, that they'll actually go up in numbers. So I just included some of them. The Intro to Ed Prep, you know, shows 18, so this was, if you remember, this is the second, going into the second year. This year, we started with a solid group of 13 students, and you'll see 10 of them are going to continue into year two, so that number has gone up from last year. And then, as I said, the others, the Accelerated Spanish for the Heritage is new, that's something that Nancy De La Cruz and I, and Mr. Nick Cook, and other rural language teachers proposed as a new course. Right now, it only has two students, but the AMD students haven't been rostered into that course. So if you look right now, that's the reason why that is. AP Statistics is typically anywhere between 17 or right at the 20 mark. I feel like that's always been a conversation, too, just here at the, at the table in terms of, you know, that particular course, but it does give students options if they decide to switch their math track, especially their fourth year in math. This gives them another option that they could potentially go into. And then the music in our Lives course. Anticipate these numbers to go up. Second slide of courses, anticipate to go up, these are more in the realm of cultural art, music and art. Media production has kind of been struggling the last couple of years, but one of the new aspects of it, which is why I anticipate it going up, and just hearing students talk to Ms. Lynn, is that that's actually the course that's starting to do, if you've seen our OHS news, we do it once a week on Mondays, that's the group that's been putting it on this year as their project. So as that has been catching on, more students have been like, hey, how do I get into it? And if you saw video one, and you saw the video of this week, you've seen the growth in the students from this course. So we anticipate this course increasing enrollment because of that. Then Yearbook Theater Arts Lab, when we have, you know, the shows in the fall and spring, students usually in the show take that lab period, and then Orchestra and Jazz Ensemble. These are courses that we typically, depending on the enrollment, sometimes, which we have done historically, but I felt that it was important to describe it that way this year. I've looked at prior presentations, and I didn't always articulate that well, so hopefully this captures it. So these are typically courses that we, if we had, you know, a lot of students enrolled, we would run separately, but we've also combined, and historically, we've done that. It's not our preference, it's not our first choice, however, we want to make sure we run them, right? And we're also fiscally responsible in terms of teaching load as well. So these are courses that will be combined with another course that's already running, in order to ensure that it runs rather than, you know, closing the course for the following school year. And then these just represent courses that are low enrolled, not 100% sure where they may be between now and June. So AP English 12 is one, and I think part of that, too, is there's so many courses in 12th grade English electives that we offer, that not everybody always goes into AP, SUNY numbers are high, SUNY Horrors, SUNY Race, like there's so many offerings in English in 12th grade, so that doesn't always surprise me of that number. The SUNY Ed Prep, so this is the second-year course for our Ed Prep program, so the students, 10 of the 13 are moving into the second-year course. One of the things that I talked to Beth Testa, because she's been the teacher, working with Nancy and I on this course, is if there are seniors right now interested, or juniors, I should say, interested in teaching as a profession, we'll have them enroll in this course, and not having had to taken the first course in order to bump up this enrollment. Because counselors do have students that are interested in the profession, but just didn't take the first course this year. So we're going to make that adjustment in order to increase that number as well. SUNY Physics, International Law, History Through Art didn't run this year either, so we anticipate it may not run next year. Same thing with African-American History. Intro to Musical Theater has been one that's, depending on year, has been hit or miss, but Mr. Morrison and I were working with Mr. Vargas of how to give students a little bit of a different experience through that music production course. And the Intro to Musical Theater starts off low, but typically as freshmen come in and they start to learn a little bit more about theater in the first year, that number started low last year, and after the summer program, as Beatty did kind of her own recruitment by doing a segment of Freshman Academy, and that number soared as well. But again, these, depending on how things go, they may remain the same, or, and they've been about the same each year, and in some cases, you know, it just may not potentially run. But typically, you know, when we get to the point of, does a class run or not, it's like the last resort. It's not like we're constantly closing classes at the end of every, every year. We really try our best to get students interested in them. Okay? Questions? Yeah?
So, thank you for that presentation. I think it was helpful to see all the classes. Can you go back a couple of slides to where you had classes being combined, like right there, that's one of them? And then I think there are a couple of them. So what is the general impact? I understand that they are low enrolled, but do they have different expectations at the college level? Or, I'm just using this as an example, could be any of them ones that are combined, but is there like some expectation of you need to learn X by the time you've completed this, the first level, and then by the time you get to the next level, you need to complete Y? And now, when you combine them, does that reframe expectations, or what happens there?
So it reframes expectations to a point, but it's really then the differentiation that happens in the classroom with the teacher. So again, these have historically been ones that some years run solo, some years run combined, and we, you know, the college does work with us, so they have to also be okay with this model as well. So the students are still getting all the credits and the foundation that they need in order to be successful.
But it doesn't become too intense?
No, no. I had, no, I definitely have not heard that feedback when we've done this before. The one that for sure, like, we're looking to give you a little preview, one of the things that Ms. Nicholas, right, who's our curriculum coordinator for rural language, we're looking at ASL 3, yes, it's low enrolled, but we're also wanting to add, all the other languages have a SUNY, we don't have a SUNY in ASL, right? And we're starting to see the numbers, if you look at it from the middle school, starting to come on up, like if you look at ASL 1, ASL 2, we're starting to see that increase. That's something that we're going to be looking for as a potential, if not ASL 3, also SUNY ASL.
Great. And then one other question, actually a couple more questions. There's also a certification that you can get, once you achieve a certain level for, you know, being able to speak in both English and, let's say, if it's Italian or Spanish or whatever it might be, does that also apply for this as well?
So you're talking about the seal of bioliteracy?
That's the one, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, okay. And then my last question on this, so could you just go to the slide where you had the internship? I thought that was just really interesting there, too. How does, how does that become much more, I mean, because I'm just wanting to make sure that this is, it looks like there are 30 kids that are enrolled in this redesign of Capstone, and includes internship experience. Is there a plan to kind of make that much more inclusive to a much broader audience?
Yeah.
From, you know, you know, all different, pretty much the entire student body, because I think having that, the way that I'm reading it and understanding it, seems like it's bringing together theory and actual practical life experience in that? I just think that that's just such a nice little pathway to do something more, but for a much broader audience than just like 30.
Yeah, no, so our intention is, so when I met with the two teachers, right, that have kind of been on this Capstone journey since before even my time, this was intentional to start small, to give it a shot, right? So like, right now, they're planning on who are going to be those, you know, potential partners that we're going to partner with, what are those experiences going to look like, right? So we're kind of building it. So they felt if we gave that experience to all the seniors right away, it would be a bit more challenging. So they're kind of setting the foundation, right, the partnerships, et cetera, working with, and we anticipate that number to go up. I'm hoping to have about 50 seniors, honestly, take it, give them that experience, learn from it, to say, okay, so what do we need to do to make this something that, you know, all of our seniors, right, would participate in? Because I think it's super valuable, right? And if we talk about relevant learning, multiple literacies, right, like that, that checks off all those boxes. So it was intentionally designed to start with a smaller cohort, with the future being impacting more students.
Thank you. And then what are the types of internship experiences for our knowledge?
So it's going to be student-driven, so part of the first semester, because it's designed to be a full-year course, which is a little different than what Capstone is now. The first year, they're going to kind of learn, the first semester, kind of learn what are those interests that they want to, you know, know more about or experience, and then based on that, the teachers then will, you know, work with them to secure, so what's that internship experience look like in the spring, right? Like we talked about, you know, at the beginning of the year, having like a parent-student evening to kind of explain this a little bit, right? Like, again, having all the pieces in place, so that when we grow it, we learn, okay, so what worked really well with this group, and as we bring it to a larger audience, we need. And also fostering those partnerships, right? I mean, if we think about, you know, science research, right, like talk about a proud from last week, right, how many of them, you know, won second, third, fourth place in the world, large part of their experience, right, is also that internship, that mentoring piece, right? So this is kind of learning from that experience, too, and bringing it to a larger audience in the future.
That's great. There is a program that's out there that could be a possibility to look into, I think it's called Pencil. You want to take a look into it? I know they do it in New York City, but I think they're looking at something in Westchester, where they set up these kinds of internship experience. I don't know the duration of what internship experience is, but I think they go across multiple types of disciplines, so. But, you know, if there's anything on that, I think this is great, and appreciate this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sure. So I'd like to also thank you for this. I really appreciate a lot of these ideas. The combining of the classes, Italian 4 and 5, I think that's a brilliant idea, as well as the internships, I think that's very good for practical and real-world experience. My only question, if you will, is if some of these college-level courses, like AP English and SUNY Physics, don't run, are you then going to, I guess, recommend to these students other college-level courses? Just because if they're able to take these courses at this level and get those credits, they can save thousands of dollars, I mean, as you know, in a college course, and it'll help them graduate early or not have to take a class, and lighten their workload once they're actually in university. So is there some sort of push, let's say if AP English doesn't run, to then push them into SUNY Racism or SUNY English, so that they can then get, you know, three college credits and not have to pay for them over the next four years?
Yeah, so we've not, we've not closed the course in its history, so if it's only, like, I think right now there are 14 students taking it this year, it's not a course that I have recommended to close for those reasons, right? Especially AP SUNY, AP English and Physics in particular. Like I said, there are some years that are closer to 20 than others, so that's why I listed them as low enrolled, right, and I'm not, and being very honest about, I'm not sure if they'll hit the 20 mark, in order to get the approval to keep it going, because we've actually never closed either one of those.
Okay, thank you. Definitely have my approval.
Yep.
And I appreciate the first robotics course as well. I think it was, at our last meeting or the one before, we had the engineering club come in, and that was just such a, you know, wonderful thing to see. So seeing that transition into another course is just, you know, building on the old pride and the momentum, so thank you for that.
Welcome.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? I think normally, basically give you a green light to say-
Green light to continue with the courses as they are right now, and we'll update you if there's anything that, you know, leads us to have to close a course based on enrollment. So, green light, assuming there's a thumbs up?
Green light.
Do you have a quick question? When you have, sorry, when you have something like 94 students enrolled in one particular class, how do you accommodate that many students?
So it's a good question. So actually, Dr. Sanchez and I were talking about this, and I, Ms. Matthews and I were talking about it as the incoming director. So right now, we're looking at, right, all of our arts courses in general. For that course in particular fashion, one more than likely, originally we had planned to just run it in the, it's a semester course just in the fall, but now we're going to add sections to the spring as well. So my hope, honestly, is to be able to get as many of those students that were interested in it as possible, and if not, then they would get the first, you know, they would be the first one signed up then in year two, right? So I would definitely give preference to like seniors who really wanted to take it, and then anybody who has another year and didn't get into it, we put it into sophomore year. But we really try, originally, we thought it was only going to be a semester, but having our numbers, we've already started to look at, okay, so what does this mean if we run it, you know, both fall and spring, and knowing that we're already also running Fashion 2, which is supposed to be in the spring, right? So we'll have to run Fashion 2, thinking ahead, in the fall of next year. Yeah. Because, and, you know, one of the requests that Ms. Matt, Mr. Morrison and I made this year in the budget process was an additional art teacher, because as you see, the numbers in some of our arts classes have gone up, and I've shared, you know, data with Dr. Sanchez, and I believe even with the board, of just in the budget process, right, just how many students may not be getting that particular, certain courses, just because of staffing. So that's why this year we did advocate for a full-time, another full-time art teacher. Just keep in mind, too, space, too, because adding that one teacher actually will use those rooms downstairs 100% of the time during the school day.
It'd be great to have like a makers lab or something like that.
Yes.
And then just a clarification, the Ed Prep courses, that's our students who want to go into teaching, right?
Yep.
And then this is really just a comment on that. We know that there's a teacher shortage. We know that it's going to be, by all predictions, severe, and I totally support continuing that program, even if we have lower enrolled numbers. I think it's really important to try to grow that as best we can.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, the students that had the experience this year, you know, raved about it, and the way that Ms. Testa, the Arburn, SUNY New Pults, all kind of helped to design the course, I think it's definitely going to grow in the future. It's just like certain things that are new, students not being sure. But I agree, like, facing what we're facing, right, we absolutely need kind of a grow, an intentional grow-your-own program, so.
So it seems like we're, go.
Okay.
Just want to thank Mr. Hancock for his presentation and for today's, and all the work that went into it. So, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
We're giving you the nod, it's okay.
Congratulations.
All right, so we wanted to, you know, the past few nights, or past few board meetings, by the way, this is very cozy when I look out to the audience, as opposed to when we're in this massive cafeteria called AMD. So the past few board meetings, we've taken a moment, and appropriately so, to recognize a number of our scholars and students that are involved in a variety of activities, are basically what I would frame as our old pride. And we're very, very excited, and we need to pause to recognize some of our MBK fellows. Now, for everyone that, you know, for our community, and for the board, and others that are here, we, as a school, not only as a school, but as a community, have taken on the efforts related to MBK, which was started by former President Barack Obama when he charged us basically to say, we need to address the needs of our Black and Latino males, and with various benchmarks, or pillars that he associated with the work. With that, New York State has taken it on very aggressively, meaning it's one of the few states that I feel like is really, number one, invested money at the State Education Department, it's been part of the state budget, but also we have advocates at the State Education Department really supporting the work, our chancellor, our commissioner, and others. So I'm not going to share much more than just to say that I'm proud from where we are and where we continue to be in terms of our work, but that has to do a lot with the advisors and the individuals that support it. And we have two of them here with us, in Dr. Umar Sar and Joseph Gray, and we're here tonight to recognize four of our MBK fellows, and I'll let Mr. Gray share a little bit about that. But some are going to be former fellows, and some are new fellows. So, and we have some certificates and pins that have been sent to us from the, from New York State that we want to give to our students as well. So I'm going to invite Mr. Gray to say a few words, and then we'll invite our students up as well.
Thank you. First, I want to say greetings to the Board of Education, our superintendent, Dr. Sanchez, all administrators, faculty, staff, and friends, to our Osning MBK team, Ms. Puello, Dr. Sar, and all MBK mentors, greetings. My name, as you know, is Joseph Gray, and I'm proud to say that I am the coordinator of the MBK fellows here in Osning. The purpose of the MBK Fellows grant is to provide selected high school students with an emphasis on boys and young men of color, with opportunities to gain authentic leadership experiences, and develop service projects beneficial to the schools they attend and the communities that they live in. Tonight, we are pleased to have Nicholas Ajani Davis and John Jarama here with us. I'm going to ask them now to please stand and be recognized. Thank you. Both fellows successfully participated in all New York State fellows' activities. These activities included the Mastermind Series, which consists of reading- which consists of reading various books of diverse cultures and discussing the content with mentors and peers from schools all across New York State. As a result of this, our fellows understood the concept that you cannot be a thinker if you are not a reader, and you cannot lead if you cannot read. Other events included conferences and presentations that our fellows participated in. And all these activities accumulated into the annual MBK Symposium, which although was virtual, was still special. Especially to them, because our superintendent, Dr. Sanchez, was the presenter for one of the most exciting break rooms in the Symposium. Come on, y'all could do better than that. Through their participation and pertinent contribution, these fellows have put the Austining School District on the map. And we are proud of them. Last but not least, it is important to mention that both fellows are working with local community organizations for their internship requirements. Nicholas Ajani Davis is working with ENU Bills, and John Gerama is working with Home Run Against Drugs. These two seniors have been also accepted to the college of their choice. And I'm proud to announce that Nicholas Ajani Davis and John Gerama will be attending SUNY Binghamton next fall. So this year was also very special because the current MBK fellows had the opportunity to welcome and mentor the inductees for the 2022-2023 Fellows Program. Mohammed Loom and Seth Newman. I'm going to ask them to please stand. So these two gentlemen were selected as the MBK fellows for the upcoming school year here at the Austining High School. And I am proud of them. We believe that the inductees will rise as a powerful force here in the Austining community and proudly represent Austining with pride, integrity, and distinction. Thank you so much.
So we had you stand, but we're going to ask our MBK fellows to come on up and receive the certificate that's been, just so you know, it's been signed by our chancellor, Dr. Lester Young, who is here, if many of you, some of you were here during the ceremony that we had earlier this year, and our commissioner, Betty Rosa. So, and we also have a pin that, that's been provided to you, which will be provided to you, that has the MBK emblem on it from New York State. So I'm going to ask Nicholas to come on up. And we're asking you to stay up here so we can take a group photo with everybody as well, okay? John, do you want to come up? Get ready, Binghamton. Mohammed, would you come up? And Mr. Newman, come on up. And if you wouldn't mind, just, you know, let's give Mr. Gray and Dr. Sar a round of applause as well for all their hard work. And to the families, congratulations.
If you're doing such an outstanding job, you're not obligated to stay to the end of the meeting.
Enjoy your evenings, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move to public comment. 3.1 on any agenda items? Not yet, okay. And we had one person online. If you are line advocate, comment, please raise your hand. Okay. All right, I will take a motion, move into our business of the board, take a motion for 4-1 through 4-3.
So moved.
4-1, resolution to approve the minutes of special meeting executive session of April 4, 2022. 4-2, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 6, 2022. And 4-3, resolution to approve the minutes of regular, of the regular meeting executive session of April 19, 2022. Any discussion?
4.2 to be updated. There's some things that are in there that I asked to be spoken into the record.
Okay. I guess we need a motion to table 4-2. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? All right, so I guess we'll have, if you could let, I guess we'll have Illy look into.
We'll have her follow up.
Me?
Yep.
All right. Any discussion on, so take a new motion on? What do I do? I got to take a motion to amend? The last motion to remove 4-2 and just leave 4-1 and 4-3? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Take a motion for 5-1?
So moved. Second.
5-1, resolution to approve recommended placements? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, take a motion for 6-1 through 6-2? No, sorry, just 6-1?
So moved.
Second.
6-1, resolution regarding interfund transfers? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? And I'll take a motion for 9-1?
Second.
9-1, resolution to adopt policy 5150.1, residency reverification policy is a second reading? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, and we'll move to public comment. I know we have one guest commenter. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Sanchez, president of the school board, Mr. Galif, school board trustees, and the school district community. Project Alcance is a district-wide Latino parent advocacy group, and our roots began in the early campaign to establish full-day kindergarten in the Austining schools and in the addressing educational and social issues related to the needs of our newly arrived immigrant families and the Austining Latino community in general. We are supportive of our school district's efforts on behalf of all children and have historically informed the community of the importance of understanding and participating in school board meetings, the school district budget process, and the election of school board trustees. Understanding that many of our families are still not eligible to vote because of the citizenship requirement, we have continuously engaged in a symbolic vote on the school budget. These results have always been presented to the board at these meetings. This has been done to demonstrate our commitment to engaging in the process while also encouraging those who are citizens to vote on the designated day. We are happy that we were able to see, to restart our collection of symbolic vote this year. Though, we recognize that our efforts to be present due to the pandemic restrictions have not been maximized. This is due to the lack of in-person meetings not allowing us to have the proper education, information, and engagement with our families. We want to state that we celebrate the gains that our district has made with the support of our Austining community over the years. Our commitment to our children and families will continue to be strong, no matter what obstacles we face. We maintain faith that the Board of Education partners with us to achieve an excellent equitable education for all Austining children. In that spirit of collaboration and hope, 219 votes were in favor of the school budget and zero against. Thank you. My friend and committee member for Project Alcance, Monica Heff, will do the same thing in Spanish. All our meetings and all our members are Spanish-speaking Latino members. So for us, we have to do it in Spanish.
Hola buenas tardes. Dr. Sanchez, presidente de la Junta Escolar GALEF, miembros de la Junta Escolar y la comunidad en general. Project Alcance es un grupo que siempre ha abogado por los padres latinos del distrito. Tiene sus raíces en la campaña inicial para establecer desde el jardín de la infancia del día completo en las escuelas de Austining y abordar los problemas educativos y sociales relacionados con las necesidades de nuestras familias inmigrantes recién llegadas y la comunidad latina de Austining en general. Siempre hemos apoyado los esfuerzos de nuestro distrito escolar en nombre de todos los niños e históricamente hemos informado a la comunidad de la importancia de comprender y participar en las reuniones de la Junta Escolar. El proceso de establecer el presupuesto del distrito escolar de Austining y la elección de los miembros de la Junta Escolar. Entendiendo que muchas de nuestras familias todavía no son elegibles para votar debido al requisito de ciudadanía, hemos participado continuamente en un voto simbólico sobre el presupuesto escolar, cuyos resultados siempre hemos presentado en la junta de estas reuniones. Esto se ha hecho para demostrar nuestro compromiso de participar en el proceso, al mismo tiempo calentamos a aquellos que ya son ciudadanos a votar en el día designado. Estamos felices de haber podido recolectar votos simbólicos este año. Sin embargo, reconocemos que nuestros esfuerzos por estar presentes debido a las restricciones de la pandemia no se han maximizado debido a la falta de reuniones en persona que no nos permiten tener la educación, la información, y el alcance adecuado para nuestras familias. Queremos afirmar que celebremos lo que nuestro distrito ha logrado con el apoyo de nuestra comunidad de Austining a lo largo de los años y que nuestros compromisos con nuestros niños y familias seguirá siendo fuertes sin importar los obstáculos que enfrentemos. Mantenemos la fe en que la Junta de Educación se asocia con nosotros para lograr una educación excelente equitativa para todos los niños de Austining. En este espíritu de colaboración y esperanza, 209 votos fueron a favor del presupuesto escolar y cero en contra. Gracias.
So thank you for having us again. The board looks very different in comparison with other years. I know that some, some of you have heard us, and we have gone to collect over thousands of votes. And our main outreach and the process of education with parents is person-in-person. And because we haven't, that's our strength. So if we want to reach and do the outreach properly to the Latino families, we have to do it in person. And so with the pandemic, we haven't done much. We feel that we have been two years under the ground. We have had our own struggles with communication. But we're not, we're still alive, we're still strong, and we're coming back. So soon enough, we're going to be knocking at the district's office in 400 and requesting to have building permits. As soon as you guys let us in, we're going to be up and running. So thank you.
I just want to thank them. Thank you both for being here and for sharing, putting the effort in to elevate the voice of, voices of our community and to share that with us this evening. So just thank you both for all your effort.
Thank you. We have other public comment. I don't, our online participants, give a few seconds if they have a question. I think so. All right, any other board dialogue or discussion?
Yeah, I did just want to point out for anyone who's either watching at home, maybe on YouTube later, there is a workshop at AMD on March, sorry, May 25. It is a parent workshop, and it's featuring Ty Sells, who's a motivational youth speaker, Dr. Dixilia Lopez, Alice Joslow from Communities That Care are also joining in the presentation. And it's designed to help children navigate the challenges of adolescence. And I just wanted to sort of raise as much awareness as possible about this. I think it's one of, sort of a multi-pronged approach to deal with the mental health of our, our youth and particularly some of our students who are struggling in the middle school. I'm hopeful and I'm looking forward to additional workshops in the future. And I encourage anyone who can sort of get the word out about this. It is a parent workshop where Mr. Sells is going to discuss what he gathered from working with the students, kind of share that information forward with the parents. It's at 7 o'clock on Wednesday, May 25. And then, you know, the more things like this that can be done for parents, for students, clinical services, really intentional work on tackling some of the struggles of our adolescents, the better. And I look forward as that continues to develop this summer and into next year.
Anything else? Abstention, there's nothing else?
No.
All right, I'll take a motion. I will take a motion to adjourn? Yeah.
It was just a thank you. Just a kiss.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, good night.
Thank you, everybody.
I think I heard they're still on. They're making good business out there.